Regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. At this time, I would like for you to turn off anything that makes a noise. Cell phones, iPhones, iPads, whatever that might distract the people around you as well as us here on the podium. At this time, I'd like for you to stand for the invocation and pledge, please. Commissioner Jones?
Father God, we just thank you for this day. We thank you, Lord, that the cool weather's coming. We ask God that you... I speak peace, Lord, to the unrest in the nation. I ask God that you even put a hedge of protection around our region from ISIS and other detrimental things, Lord. We ask God for guidance and wisdom as we make important decisions today. In your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You seen any guests? Uh-huh. Anybody I need to recognize? I don't think I do. Okay. At this time, we need to consider additions and deletions to the agenda, please. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under additions, under Commissioner Cecilia Jones, is a request to appoint an at-large position to the zoning board of adjustments to replace Blonde Carter, who resigned August 9th, and select that list from the volunteer applications received, and under deletions, under Commissioner Commander Employment Contracts.
All right. Mr. Jones, I would actually, you know, take away one, add two.
Okay.
I'd like to discuss perhaps a workshop on December the 13th to discuss the 331 corridor initiative, and also I have a letter requesting our support from the Health Department, and I'd like the commission's permission to sign this letter. Those are the two I have.
And that'll be under your name?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Could I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda with its additions and deletions?
So move.
We have a motion in a second. Is any discussion?
Yeah, do we have a list of the volunteer applications that we've received? Do we have a list? Is it in the...
Is it in the book or anything? Is there attachment?
Okay. Well, good. All right. We have a motion in a second. Any questions from the floor? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, at this time, we will have public comment. We invite you to comment on anything that is on the agenda, anything that we will discuss, be discussing or voting today. You will also have an opportunity when that item comes up, we will... You'll have an opportunity to discuss it again as well, but if you would like to come forward now and discuss something on the agenda, now is your opportunity. Mr. Fletcher, as always, if you will, state your name for the record and spell your last name.
Bill Fletcher, F-L-E-T-C-A-T-R. Is it on the...
Get us to...
Bill Fletcher, F-L-E-T-C-A-T-R. I'm just curious, as I read through the agenda, a lot of the items that we're approving, or you're approving, list dollar amounts, but a lot of them do not, and I'm just wondering why some are excluded.
I don't have an answer for that question. Mr. Jones, do you, or?
It's our intent to include impacts to the budget or changes to the budget when we submit an agenda item. If there's a specific item that... Mr. Fletcher has a question about, we'd certainly address it. But if you recall, that's a portion of the agenda we added maybe a year ago, just to present as much information as we can. There's certainly no intent not to include those items that have a cost associated with them.
Okay. All right.
I'm sorry, I can't find that list. It's not an attachment in... On the granicus on the iPad, so can somebody get me that list of volunteers? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else that would like to speak on a topic before the agenda at this time? Yes, sir. If you'll come forward, please, state your name for the record and spell your last name.
Richard Butella, B-U-T-E-L-A. I want to thank the county commissioners for going forward and buying beachfront property for regional beach access at Dune Allen, and I'd also like to encourage you to also develop currently-owned beachfront property for regional beach access such as Walton Dunes, and also to develop beachfront accesses to public beach at Hedland Avenue. And also, I'd like you to continue with your development of beachfront properties by proceeding with a vote on Hedland Avenue Beach Access. This is a request for beach access with no vehicle parking. It has been firmly established that this is a county-maintained roadway for... To a public beach, there is need for a beachwalk to this location due to considerable new development in this area, including one house that can house up to 30 people. In addition, it would be the only beach access from Sea Highland to Seaside, which is wide enough to provide a shower and beak bike rack. Currently, there's existing public parking on Hedland Avenue, and 38A area, however, is currently being utilized primarily by Whiskey Bravo patrons and staff. Property owners adjacent to Hedland Access have erected fences and new vegetation and plantings obstructing the Hedland Avenue public access. I'd like to make a forward formal request that the county remove these obstacles. Been put in by private property owners, including fences and vegetation, so that we can go and access this public access and watch the sunset without having fences obstructing our view and vegetation obstructing our access. In conclusion, access is the only Sea Highland road that has no beachwalk over. The need for a neighborhood beachwalk over at Hedland Avenue is greater than ever due to recent construction, and more beachfront accesses are needed all along 38A. And once again, I thank you for buying beach access down in Dune Allen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, we will move forward. Is there any items that you would like to see removed from the consent agenda at this time, ladies and gentlemen? Seeing none, I need approval for the consent agenda?
So move.
Second? I have a motion in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next, we have our Waste Management EAL.
Madam Chair, I found the necessary form with the clerk's office abstaining from this vote due to a conflict of interest.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
I have a motion in second. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. The first item we had asked for you consideration is a request from the West Florida Regional Planning Council, yes, to adopt the West Florida Local Emergency Planning Committee Resolution Honoring 30 Years of Emergency Planning Community Right to Know Act. The resolution is attached to your document, to your package. It's simply a resolution honoring the 30th anniversary of the Emergency Planning and Community Right to Know Act and recognizing those that have participated in that program.
All right. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is a request for you to approve us to advertise an RFP for health insurance consultant. Our current agreement with our... The agreement with our current consultant expires in January, I believe, and we'd like to go out for an RFP for proposals to provide that service to the county.
Second?
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Next item is from Public Works, is a request to award and authorize the chair to sign the contract number 016-024 for engineering services for County Road 395 North, road construction and multi-use path project with Dewberry Engineers doing business as Dewberry Preble Rish.
Are there any questions about this item? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor?
We ain't had a motion yet.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request for your approval to seek requests for proposals for the installation of new fuel management system and the accompanying software and direction regarding recouping of the credit obtained by Track Fuel Management System. If you may recall, we awarded a contract to Track Fuel to provide the software and hardware for a management system at our fueling stations for around the county. After tireless efforts, those folks have failed to meet our standards and do the things they've asked us to do. So the first part of the request is that we go out for an RFP for a new system to manage the fuel delivery.
Any questions, ladies and gentlemen?
Motion to approve.
Second? I have a motion in a second. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And while we don't have... We're not underwater in this contract. Prior to this agreement, this contract with Track Fuel Management, there was an existing credit whereby we had a credit with Track Fuel, and we're working with the county attorney's office to collect all that credit and turn it, put it back into the county's coffers, so we'll keep you updated on that as it moves forward.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Tusa?
Morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. First up on the agenda for TDC is to give you an update on the Old Florida Village parcel located on 38A. I have been in touch with legal. They have been doing some due diligence on that parcel, and they have determined that it is not a good fit because of the covenants with that development. So it is legal's recommendation that we don't move forward. So unless you have any questions regarding that, we're just gonna let the developer, Max Matthews, know that we won't be moving forward.
And Commissioners, just briefly, the covenants and restrictions restrict the use of that property to commercial use only. There's no real definition of what commercial use is in the covenants and restrictions, but a quick look at the case law made me very skeptical that we could use the property for the purpose that we intended.
Very good. Do we need to take any action or just let it drop?
Just tell us not to take any further action.
Great. And I have prepared a presentation for the next item, request direction on real property for beach access and parking. We had put together a, which is in the board packets, a presentation from the Walton County Property Appraisers website that had information on the parcel, showed the maps, and it had some backup information, and I thought that was quite lengthy, so I went back and did a... Put together a shorter presentation and grouped the parcels together kind of by project, if you will. So you can kind of see here up on screen, these are all the properties, and you've seen it Golf Drive, Fort Panic Road, Oyster Lake Outfall, et cetera. So I think that might make it a little bit more digestible to kind of look at this, you know, by the different projects than individual parcels. And as we move through, we can break down the parcels if you'd like, and we can talk about that. One thing I think is important, obviously, in working with legal when we're talking about the Old Florida Village parcel, I think it might be prudent for us as we move forward in looking at parcels to purchase for both beach access and parking, is that we do our due diligence work upfront ahead of time. So if the board is interested in moving forward on a particular project here, then I think legal should do the due diligence beforehand, so make sure we don't have any issues, and then...
And the Office of the County Attorney enthusiastically supports that suggestion. We... By doing the appraisals upfront and getting contracts and then doing due diligence, we get under a real time crunch, and we got through it fine with the last two, with no problems and no heartaches, but I could see the time crunch making us make decisions that we're not exactly comfortable doing at the time. So the idea of let's go ahead and explore ahead of time before we ask for the appraisals is a good one, and thank Jay for coming up with it. We will be happy to help do that and participate in that due diligence.
Yeah, I think with so many properties, I mean, right here, we're looking at 19 individual properties in about eight different projects, so it's quite a bit, and it's extensive. So I think if we can do that upfront, that way legal can get all that done and out of the way, and then if we want to move forward with something at that point, then we can do the appraisals. So what I thought today is we do this presentation, we go through it, let you see what you are interested in and moving forward with, and then at that point, we'll get approvals to move forward and work with legal on that due diligence work. So first off, question?
Yes, as far as the due diligence, that's gonna be legal handling the background and all that other stuff. Is this due diligence also, Jay, looking at it and see if it's gonna fit into what we're wanting to try and do down there?
Yes, sir.
As part of that whole thing?
Yes, sir.
It would include things like planning, making sure that the property is properly, has a land use designation or that's usable for the want, and of course, environmental issues as well.
So are we wanting to do, Madam Chair, go through these 19 particular ones individually, or do we want to ask staff to bring back after they've vetted it through this due diligence a certain amount instead of 19? Because I don't know that all 19 is really gonna be...
If I might just make a suggestion, sir. If you're interested, we can just go through the projects and maybe identify if there's something you're more particularly interested in, and we could put that on the top of a priority list, and then if there's something that's maybe bottom on the list, we can maybe prioritize it where we want to put these projects. But I'm open to doing however you like to pursue.
I think we should... I think we should prioritize them. I think beachfront is, you know, top. Beachfront, number one, two, three, four, five. The other ones, I'm not for putting parking garages and parking lots in the middle of neighborhoods or on roads that already have very poor traffic circulation.
Yes, ma'am.
I've been over by myself. I've read these, and also I met with Mr. Tusa yesterday. I am comfortable, again, with ranking maybe the first four or five that we think would be good projects for us, and let's concentrate on those, and if, you know, if one isn't what we need, then maybe we go to the next one. But I'm comfortable with ranking them today, at least say, look into the first four or five, you know?
And this is gonna be a timely process, so if we rank them, then we can, you know, obviously, these opportunities might go by the wayside depending on timing for us, because just because we're looking at it, we have to do our due diligence, somebody else might come in next week and go, okay, I'll take that property. So certainly, a higher priority item should be, you know, given prudence.
You gave us a really nice map that targeted these projects, but if I could see where regional projects and see where we really need, you know, I think we talked about this when the Hedland thing came up, about having a comprehensive plan of where we need the... I know we need stuff at Rosemary Beach, and I know it's hard to get, but...
There is one map that I gave out, it's rather small here, but I think... Rick, can you zoom in on that a little bit so we can look at the regional beach accesses versus these proposed sites?
Can I just dump my water on Bill?
Oh, no.
Good. Here goes, sweetie.
Get somebody... Mary? This is helpful, thank you.
Is that good?
You get some towels for Ms. Meadows, please.
I think we...
You got it?
I think you got it.
Some paper towels.
I think it just...
So you can see number one on the list here, the little flag Miramar Beach, that's where our current beach access is, obviously, and then you see that little one right there, that would be the property in the 800 block of Scenic Golf Drive. That parcel is just a little over two acres, and it is 360 feet wide of beachfront, so it's quite a parcel with beachfront footage there.
I think we ought to just say, you know, beachfront is... Just go one, two, three, four, five, all the beachfront parcels for sure. I don't think any of them are better than the others.
Rank higher than the others?
Yeah, that's what I think, and then... And then these other ones that are off roads, you know, like the one on 395, I think that one's at the bottom of the list, and then I think the... Let's see, where's the other one?
There's another on Highway 38 and Blue Mountain.
Blue Mountain, yeah.
That was the proposed parking.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, because some of these parking locations, they're far enough away from the beach, and the beach accesses are really neighborhood accesses, so there's really not a lot of beachfront there. I think the regional ones, though, the Fort Panic one would be number one, in my opinion.
So Fort Panic?
Yes, sir.
I concur with Commissioner Meadows that I think that all the ones that are beachfront, we ought to look at as our priorities, and then when that's done, if we still want to take a look at the others, we can, but I think that indeed she makes a very valid point that those are the premier things that we should be looking at for the future of tourism and maintaining the beaches. So I'd like to see us take a look and do the due diligence on the ones that are golf front.
All right, let's make sure we all understand the 800 block of Scenic Golf Drive, is that...
That's one of them.
One of them. 5500 block of County Highway 38 at the Oyster Lake Outfall is another one.
Did you miss Fort Panic? You skipped Fort Panic?
You went Fort Panic as well. The... There are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven parcels there?
Yeah.
Is there... Okay. Let's see. 3800 block of County Highway 38.
And Hitten Drive.
Drive in Seegrove, and also the 500 block of Eastern Lake Road.
What about the 3500 block of East County Highway 38?
No.
Is that beachfront? The 4500 block?
3500 block? Yes, ma'am, it is.
It is?
It's adjacent to Santa Clara.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so now, do you want to rank them further or just...
No, I think let's do the due diligence on those, and then we can determine which ones meet and which don't meet, but I think that's the best priority, go forward with that and get that started.
All right. Do you know when, Mr. Davis, I'm putting you on the spot here, do you know when y'all could come back to us with some information on these parcels?
It will take 30 days, Commissioner. By the time we get the environmental stuff back from Public Works and...
Okay, so maybe the first of November?
Yes, ma'am, I most likely will order, with your permission, obviously, but most likely go ahead and order quick title searches to make sure we can look at easements and that sort of thing ahead of time. So 30 days is...
Do you want more time than that?
17 properties.
Why don't we make... I hate to push things off, but how about the second meeting in November, maybe? That would give us 45 days.
All right. We will have a change in the board by then, is that...
Oh, I hadn't thought about that.
I mean, it doesn't matter.
They've been put two.
They need that, okay, so the second meeting in...
How about the second meeting in October? Yes, ma'am.
Second meeting when?
November, right?
November.
Second meeting in November. All right, is that good for you, Mr. Tusa?
Works for me.
Yeah, we can.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate the hard work that you have done putting into this, and I appreciate, and I also appreciate people coming forward and being willing to work with the county and give us perhaps an opportunity to purchase beachfront property that will last through the ages, so.
Yeah, we've had quite a few, and they just keep rolling in.
That's what I was fixing to say, is there might be more, and, you know, I know some of these have realtors, but an individual could present property without a realtor if they wanted to.
Absolutely, and that's a good point, Commissioner Jones. And just in speaking with different commissioners at different times, it might be best if we just kind of want to say, you know what, if you're interested in presenting your property to the county, get with Jay Tusa at the TDC, because I know all of y'all have spoken with you individually, and it's, you know, y'all are getting inundated with requests via the phone and emails, as is Larry. I am as well, so I think if we have one point of contact, it might help streamline that process a little bit of, oh, well, did you talk to so-and-so, and let me forward this to you, and I just think that might help cut down on that a little bit.
If we could direct, you're the point of contention.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then for updates, I was gonna ask Jason to step up and give an update on the parking for state parks.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioners, Jason Cutshaw, C-U-T-S-H-A-W. I'm happy to report that there was another successful partnership between the state parks and the county this year. The parking program at Topsail, the very first year prior to the program, I got the statistics on the first week of visitation, there was 365 guests, but the first year of the program, it jumped up to 614 guests, and then this year, we had 822. So it shows a progression of success, and I met yesterday with the park management there, and they were very happy with the program, and spoke very positive about it, and they're excited about the possibilities of doing another program next year with the county. Grayton had a one-day program that we covered for vehicle entry, they had 123 vehicles that day. Also went back and met with them afterwards, and they were very positive about it, thought the program ran very smooth and very easy, and the guests were very happy with the program. So that's it.
So why did Grayton only do it one day?
Grayton had a... It was a combination. They had an event that day, and also they wanted... We had talked multiple times about them, and they said, well, maybe that would be a good day to have a partnership with the Dune Lake Day in combination with kind of the end of the season wrap-up to try to give back something to the visitors that were visiting the area.
Now, why won't they do it year-round?
We're talking about that now. We're looking at that and looking at their statistics on how full they are and what type of operations. I've spoke with them, and also spoke with the district supervisors, too, and they seemed to... They were like, it's been successful at Topsail, so they're... They seem to be in favor of it now.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I think to us, it's a no-brainer. We... I'm pleased that we made the decision two years ago, you know, to utilize Topsail. It helps the county, it helps the tourists, and it helps the state as well, because, you know, we're paying, you know, for the visitors to go there.
Yes, ma'am.
So to me, it's a no-brainer for Grayton and Deer Lake. I mean, you know, I'd like to see both of them somehow, you know, become part of the program, so we'll just work on it, but thank you so much.
I would too, yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Commissioners. I have two items for you. The first is a request to approve and authorize the chair to execute a resolution authorizing the county to quit claim, any interest it might have in certain abandoned property pursuant to the right-of-way acquisition agreement adopted by Walton County Board of County Commissioners on March 22, 2016. The resolution further authorizes the chair to execute the necessary quitclaim deeds. This is the property at 3... I get these numbers wrong, 393 and 38 at Seegrove, where we're finishing the swap for the improvements to expand that intersection. So I just need a motion to authorize the resolution and signing the deeds.
So move.
Second.
Motion in second. Mr. Chapman?
Isn't that 395, not 393?
Yes, sir, I'd do it backwards any time. I'm sorry.
395.
Seegrove.
395, Seegrove. Any questions, ladies and gentlemen? Anyone in the audience? See a hand raised? If you would come up, please, state your name for the record and spell your last name. Thank you, sir.
I wanted to back up just a second on the beach properties. Could I request that the meeting to discuss those should be held in South Walton? I don't think there's a great deal of interest in North Walton about the beach accesses in South Walton, because South Walton is going to be the one impacted more than any other place.
Appreciate it. We may start the discussion up here, but we certainly will before, I'm sure, before any final decision is made, have it at a meeting in South Walton.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
On item number 35 abandonment...
Excuse me, sir. You had an opportunity earlier to comment. When I get to... Oh, you're on 38. I'm sorry, go ahead. You're on the right one.
Okay. I spoke at the planning commission meeting on June 9th, and at that meeting, I brought up the safety issue of not moving that bike path to the south of 38A. And until that's done, we have a definite safety issue there, and so the recommendation from the planning commission to the county commissioners is, with a caveat, that there's there's a safety issue, that the bike path needs to be moved to the south side of thirty-eight. And until that's done, you're going to have a safety issue there, even with a deputy at that intersection on key weekends, it still is an issue. So, moving forward, without a police officer at that intersection, we're going to have a safety issue. And at one point in this abandonment, excuse me, abandonment, uh, resolution, uh, there was supposed to be, there was a thing in there as far as, uh, I, um, there was a, an item in there, uh, that would be only for ten years, and that could be, uh, stopped if there were safety issues. And that's why I brought up at the meeting, at the planning meeting, what tilts the scale as far as safety? Does it take a death? Similar to out on ninety-eight and all the feet of roads going to ninety-eight, the only time we put signal lights out there is after deaths have occurred, and then we react. And, you know, in this intersection of thirty-eight and three ninety-five, that is exactly what we're dealing with there, is prevent any deaths or injuries occurring from the bike path people crossing, because you're going to have a right-turn lane, and people do not stop on right-turn lane, and they will just turn that corner, and that's be an issue.
All right, thank you. Did you want to address the, the bike lane and...
Uh, well, the, the agreement, the agreement that's been signed, uh, does not allow us to put the bike lane on the south side for a period of ten years, absent some health safety reason that the commission would find, uh, at a later time. Uh, the abandonment's completed, that, that was done a couple of meetings, two or three meetings ago. Uh, this, this resolution just allows you to sign the, per the agreement that we've entered into and recorded and signed, signed and recorded, uh, just authorizes you to quit claim that little strip of property on the south side.
It might, um, alleviate some of the concern if, um, if any, anything does happen at that intersection that maybe Public Works, you know, know and can kind of track it, um, you know, uh, that might...
Yes.
Help with some concerns, okay? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, moving forward. Yes.
Thanks again for letting me speak. I live near that intersection, three ninety-five and thirty-eight, and I agree, I agree with...
Mr. Bausch?
Pardon?
Are you Mr. Bausch?
I am Richard Butella.
Butella, okay.
Okay, I thought, sorry, sorry, sir. Um, I live near that intersection, I go by that intersection a lot, and I agree with that gentleman a hundred percent, uh, that bike path should be on the south side, be on the north side, it slows the traffic at this key intersection. I mean, people have to, and cars have to stop to let bicyclists and pedestrians kind of saunter across that intersection, plus, as the man's previous person said, it is a safety hazard, because even as, as a driver or a pedestrian, I've noticed, you know, like he said, when you're making a right turn, you can't see bicyclists zooming, zooming by on your right blind side. Uh, bike path really needs to be on that south side. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, um, just one thing on...
Uh, state your name for the record.
Oh, Tim Norris, N-O-R-R-I-S.
Thank you, Tim.
Um, the, uh, the list that Mr. Tusa has, I do recommend that we do consider some parking areas.
I'm sorry, um, it, this...
That, is that over?
Could you wait until the end and bring it back up? We're discussing this matter at the moment, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Call question.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is, uh, the, a request to authorize the chair to sign all the necessary closing documents to close the Grayton Grand property owned by Genre Holdings LLC, uh, land purchased by the county. Commissioners, last, yesterday afternoon, we have one change I wanted to make sure you were aware of, and I, we did email it to you last night, and it's, uh, attached, but, um, this, the, the seller has elected to use a ten thirty-one exchange agent, we just had na- add the name of the agent to the closing, uh, the HUD one closing statement. So if, with that change, and you should have a copy of it, uh, we would ask that you approve the, approve the closing and approve the, the chair, or authorize the chair to sign the documents.
So move.
Second, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion among the board? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
By way of information, the closing is scheduled for Thursday afternoon.
Nay, yeah.
We have, yeah, four ayes and one nay, all right. Commissioner Meadows?
Yes, as a kind of a follow-up to the gentleman, Mr. Butella's, um, comments about the Hedland access, I, I would like to ask that the private vegetation be removed from the county's property within that thirty-foot access. It is heavily landscaped, and I would just request that, uh, that private vegetation be removed.
Um, could we have Public Works or TDC go down and look at it and see what, um, we need to do to accomplish that?
I'd have Public, I'd have Public Works go look at it, because it's, um, it's a county easement, um, it's not a beach access yet, but, um...
But if it's a help has...
An improved, but it is a beach access, but it's not, it's just not improved, so people could walk down there, but what's happened is, there's all this vegetation that's been planted to prevent people, and I think one of the things we need to be careful of is private property owners just kind of moving over into easements and other lands and blocking them off from other people's access. This is what happens all over the state, and before you know it, um, there's no, um, everything's blocked off, and there's walls, there's landscaping, and there's such, so I just think that we are to make sure that we don't allow that to, to happen. And so I'd like Public Works to go down there and look at that landscaping and, um, um, get back with me and let me know, um, uh, how, how you can remove it.
All right, if you will take care of that. Mr. Wright, we appreciate it. Um, Mr. Enbell?
Uh, Madam, I just want to, uh, thank Mr. Jones and the finance people for the fine job they did on the budget this year that was passed last night. Thank you for making sure there was no increase in the millage over last year.
Yeah. And, all right, Ms. Jones?
Uh, we'll be putting in an automated door at the Life Enrichment Center out of ADA funds, um, so that's exciting. And then, on the zoning board of adjustments, I'd like to nominate Phil Anderson from Paxton for that in, at-large position.
Bill Anderson?
Phil Anderson, that's Philip's son.
Okay, oh, right, yeah, okay.
A second, a motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to nominate Phil Anderson.
Whose son, whose son is that?
Philip Anderson, he was a coach and, um, really well, city, uh, the...
No, he was clerk, uh, clerk of, um, Walton County long, long time back, in the, what, sixties, maybe?
Right, he was also, one of you coached at Paxton?
He was coach at Paxton, yeah.
This says that he, he lives in Dufuniac Springs, up on Highway three thirty-one North, is that Dufuniac or is that Paxton?
Near Paxton.
Near Paxton, yeah.
But it's Dufuniac Springs zip code?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so he's a lawyer?
No.
Is that, is...
Application says...
Says he's a, he's a lawyer, uh, Florida bar, um, is that going to be any kind of, um, um, conflict of interest, he's on the zoning board of, of adjustment?
Commissioner, my, and forgive me for not looking at it, but my understanding is, Mr. Anderson's retired, he's, he's, he was a Navy JAG officer, so I think I understand he's retired and not practiced.
Okay.
It's, it's his brother that's the...
Navy or Army, I can't...
Yeah, it's his brother that's the, um, firefighter, right, yeah, okay. Um, all right, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Anyone in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
Okay. Um, motion carries. Um, who do we have next? Um, Mr. Chapman?
I have nothing.
All right, I, I do, as soon as I can figure out where my pages are here, um...
The first item, it's, since there's money involved, we probably need to have a motion and a second to approve it.
Thirty seconds. Okay, let me go back to him.
On the door.
On the door, okay, I didn't see that, I'm sorry.
I make a motion, we spend not to exceed thirty, three thousand six hundred dollars for, for the, uh, door.
Ah, okay, here it is.
Where's it coming from?
It's coming from the ADA funds.
ADA funds. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, I do have, um, a number of items. First of all, we had discussed at a previous meeting approval to install a splash pad at Choctaw Park. This will be a very small splash pad, about the size of the one that's up in Paxton, and, um, I did find out it, the water, um, bill will probably run about a hundred dollars a month, um, so I would like to include in, in the splash pad itself about ten thousand, um, so I'd like to actually request about eleven thousand, um, um, to help pay for the water bill, being we've already budgeted in Parks, this already has a budget, I'd like to include a thousand dollars to help pay the water bill for the first year, and then next year, it can be budgeted in Parks and Recreation. Um, I'd like approval to do that, please, and I'll make...
I'll make, I'll make a motion, I think that's a great thing for the children at Choctaw Beach, so I make that motion.
And the, that a district, uh, for recreational plat fee funds. And, uh, I will say before we, I, I go down, by there often now, I went by last week, and we had a TPO meeting, it's such a joy to see people using that park, and their park, they're gone fishing, it just, I go yahoo every time we go by, we did a wonderful job on that. But I have a motion and a second on the floor?
Second.
All right. Any discussion, ladies and gentlemen? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Um, I would also like, uh, um, to install a new basketball backboard at Legion Park, roughly a thousand dollars, maybe a little less, but, um, out of my recreational plat fee funds, uh, if I could be allowed to do that as well.
Motion to approve.
Second, I have a motion and a second, um, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. I do have two other items, um, um, and Billy Williams, you may want to, um, give some light to this, if he is in the room, raise your hand, I can't, uh, he must have already left, I saw him earlier.
No, he's back there where he's supposed to be.
On the very back.
In that corner.
Oh, there he is, oh, okay. Um, uh, he has been meeting with the two cities, um, as part of his restore, um, coordinator job, to help the infrastructure along the three thirty-one corridor. Um, we all know when that, um, highway is four-laned, um, the only thing that keeps it from becoming an economic engine is the fact that, um, there, in certain amounts, there's, uh, places along there, there's not water and sewer available. So he's been working with the two cities, um, and us to see how we can all combine together to do it, because it's going to take all three agencies, it's going to take the county and the two cities for us to plan as we go forward and, and make that happen. Um, the committee, uh, composed of, say, Mr. Williams and, and representatives of the two cities, would like to have a workshop for all of us, um, the cities as well as the county, to bring everybody up to speed on what is being done, um, how we think we need to go forward, um, in making, um, this happen, uh, the, the three thirty-one corridor infrastructure, and, and how we approach, um, the legislature on, on getting funding for this. So I would like to schedule a workshop for December the thirteenth at two thirty, um, for, for all of us to get together and discuss this issue.
We're bound.
Um, that would be at the south annex, it'd be before our regular board meeting, at four o'clock.
Why don't we move that north up here, since it's primarily somewhere in Freeport on another date, instead of on this?
Well, we can, we...
We try to jam too much on a regular board meeting, and, uh, we don't set aside enough time.
So you want to have a separate day for it?
I think so, I, I prefer that.
Um, I agree, because sometimes our board meetings go really long down there.
Right, we were trying to figure, factor in, the new board takes, uh, over on November the twenty-second, um, and then next all of a sudden, it's Christmas, um, we were trying, and like, we're trying to schedule the time, you know, for everybody, but, um, if you, so that we could meet before that, um, after the new board, uh, comes on, but before we break for Christmas, which is kind of, so, we can pick a day and see if, what works. Do you want to do it on the twelfth up here, or the ni- um, the sixth of December? Am I looking at December right, yeah? You tell me, what's, what's good for you?
I'm good, the entire week of, uh, December the fifth, any one of those days.
Do we want to try for December the sixth, Mr. Williams? Could, if you would come forward, please, sir?
Someone will have a TDC meeting that morning, at, from nine to eleven.
Okay.
So we could do it that afternoon.
We could do it that afternoon, so four o'clock, what's convenient for y'all?
Four o'clock's good for me.
Um, does the city of Dufuniac, when do they meet?
I'll, I'll have to go back and go, that was the purpose of, of this request, was to have a joint meeting, we'll go back, I think in that first week of December and post the new board. The main purpose of this is to obviously, again, bring all boards together, as the chair said, but also to look at, um, the strategies as we move forward into legislation or the session, and there'll be an organizational meetings, uh, really in November, and then start looking in January at some committee meetings. So this is the impetus in trying to do this, so it's very important, whatever y'all can come up with, but I'll, I'll go back and coordinate with the cities.
Well, Mr. Carpenter is here. Um, do y'all meet on the sixth, Mr. Carpenter?
Normally, they're Mondays, aren't they?
Okay, you meet on the twelfth, okay, so we could do this on the sixth, it wouldn't bother the, okay, um, why don't we try for the sixth of December? Go ahead, and so we can advertise and get it ready, and then if, um, there's any trouble, then we can come back later, but, um...
Where we want to meet?
Is that a motion? Um, we will meet here in this boardroom?
I think it's on the room large enough, if we have a large turnout.
All right.
Say four PM?
Uh, is that your motion, sir?
December the sixth, four PM, Walton County Courthouse Dufuniac, this workshop.
All right.
Second.
A motion and a second to that effect? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, next, I received a letter from Holly Holt, um, basically, they are going out for a grant, um, to help with the underserved, um, population of Walton County. Um, the letter states, there's sixteen, uh, point ninety-eight percent of Walton County residents who have no medical coverage, and thirty-nine point three percent of Walton County residents, that's twenty-three thousand, uh, living at or below the, um, the poverty level. Um, she was, is requesting a letter of support for them to go out for this grant, um, and I would like your permission for me to sign it. If you would like a copy of the letter, I think I have some attached here somewhere. Um, I, it has been done in the past, she gave me a, she included a copy of a letter that, um, Kenneth Pridgen signed when he was chair, so apparently, we have done this in the past.
Do, do we know how that would expand beyond the, the current situation, going to both Paxton and, and Mossy Head?
That is not stated in here, it's, you know, it's not stated in her letter, um, you know.
I'd kind of like to know if this, if this is the case, we've already got two rural We've already got two rural health clinics, I'd like to see another one over on the east side of the county, somewhere between Bruce and, and Red Bay. And maybe in supplying or asking for this grant, they'll be able to get some additional funding to implement it down there.
Um, the first paragraph of her letter reads, "The Florida Department of Health in Walton County and Walton Community Health Center are pursuing continuation of a grant funding from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. Since the opening of the cleaning in Dufuniac Springs on October the twelfth, twenty-twelve, we have seen many patients who would not have received medical or dental care without our services." Um, so it's a continuation of a grant that they have gotten to, to provide medical and dental services.
It's not an expansion of existing funding?
Doesn't say, no, it's just continue the grant that we're already having.
Do you need direction or do you need a motion?
I need a motion to, to sign my name to this letter.
So move.
All right.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Um, any discussion in the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Uh, next, we have citizens' requests. Shadow Pines Homeowners Association requests to add, uh, Michelle Lane to the county road maintenance program. Is there anyone here on that matter? Seeing none, we'll move forward.
Madam Chair, would you like Public Works to review it?
Would you please?
We'd be glad to.
And bring us back some information.
We, we will contact them, find out exactly what the request is and see how it plugs in.
All right. Now, at this time, we will have, um, other public comments. Um, anyone who wants to speak on, um, some further matter coming up or something that you're concerned about?
Madam Chair, um, Commissioners, this, my name is Tim Norris, N-O-R-R-I-S. Um, just want to, uh, mention that, uh, one of the TDC issues with the tourism is that we don't have enough parking and that relates to the businesses and the, the traffic flow on thirty-eight. Three ninety-five, we're getting ready to take out about thirty spaces there, so there'll be no more parking there. The businesses across the street, two restaurants have their own parking lots, so they will not allow any further parking in that area. So you've got three large communities right behind there, there's four beach accesses across the street, they got to park and, and put their bikes and golf carts and cars somewhere. So, uh, I think parking areas are very critical too as far as what we're looking for. And the beaches, don't get me wrong, beach, beachfront is good, but we do need a place to park these people. Thank you.
We certainly do. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on any matter? Yeah, Ms. Bausch.
Hi. Um, we, we had made an offer to the county for a beach parcel and submitted it, I believe, dated August eighteenth. And I would respectfully request that if you all would be willing to have due diligence done on it right away, uh, if you're interested. We have postponed putting it on the market or anything or possibly refurbishing for a future rental, uh, you know, in order to give you a time to, to do this, to look at it without realtors or, um, anything like that involved. So if, if you would be willing, we would really appreciate your consideration to putting it, you know, as one of the early ones to have due diligence. And that way, if you find that there's an issue on it, you could let us know and then we would move on, okay?
Mr. Davis, have you looked back in that regard? All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. I did, yeah.
Good morning. My name is Alice Butella and I would like to thank Commissioner Meadows and, and the Commissioners for, um, the action they took today regarding the removal of the vegetation and sand fencing and irrigation that has been placed on the Hedland Beach Access Bluff. I look forward to enjoying that bluff once again and, uh, and I also look forward to the, hopefully in the future, to be able to walk down that beach access as, uh, the majority of the people, uh, expressed their views for that development at our, at your, uh, county, uh, hearing that you had this summer. Uh, and in regard to the Beach Act, beachfront that you're considering buying, I really encourage that and I support you on that, but I would also like you to consider priority of the current beachfront that we already have, such as Hedland Avenue, improving that and the Walton Dunes. And so I appreciate your help. Thank you.
And we thank you for your comments. Um, is there anyone else?
Good morning, Commissioners. Grace Morris for the record.
M-A-R-S-E?
That's correct.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, first, again, I join in thanking, um, Commissioner Meadows for bringing forth, um, and the effort to get this opened up to the public. Um, I, I'm very, very happy to, it made, warmed my heart to hear that some action was being taken to reclaim public accesses. By delaying a decision to construct a beach walkover at Hedland Avenue and Seagrove, you're encouraging others to take advantage and take over a million dollars worth of Gulf front property. So, uh, and, and it would be for their private use only. So I'm asking you to please bring this back for vote and, um, it's just the right thing to do and I want to thank you very much and I know I'm under my three minutes, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. We appreciate it. Is there anyone else that would like to, uh, speak at this time?
I just wanted to get clarification based on Ms. Bausch's comments. Um, does the board want these brought back as legal? Is doing the due diligence on these parcels or do you want them all back on once on the date that we discussed?
Well, I think everybody is interested in getting their property figured out or for sale. I mean, it's not just them. So I, I, I don't know how you can rank one on top of the other one, get it done and let, you know, because everybody has the same, uh, like, we're going to sell it, we need to put it on the market. So we either need to back up the due diligence and do it in, I think in thirty days and have it the first meeting in November in South Walton, um, or, you know, that, that would be my recommendation is...
What date did we settle on?
Second meeting in November, but you could have it in the first meeting in November because that gives you six, four or five, that gives you six, seven weeks to get that done, so.
I, I'm fairly certain we can get it. My only worry is the environmental stuff, that sometimes takes a little longer.
Right.
We, we should have it.
Yeah.
We should, we could have it done.
November the eighth, yeah. You should have at least enough time. Did we change that meeting to the seventh?
We did, to the seventh.
Because of election?
Yeah. If we don't have it all, we can certainly present a parcel.
You don't have it all, yeah. And, and the environmental, on some of these pieces, their beachfront pieces, they're, you know, they already have a house on them or they're, you know. So I, I think it should be pretty easy to do, but, um, that would be my suggestion is that instead of moving somebody into the front of the line, you know, because everybody's anxious to get their properties figured out, I'm sure.
Will, will they all be in the, in the beach mouse zone?
Um, some of them are over like in Seagrove and that is more, uh, in the Seagrove area, I mean, in the beach mouse area than over on the western zone.
Judge Green, if y'all will stay with us just one second, please?
Anyway, so I just, I just wanted to ask for clarification on that since we had set a date. I just, if, if we're...
Do you want to move it to the, to the eighteenth?
November the seventh and Seagrove. Yeah, I think you can, yeah, I, I think you can, because most of these parcels are de-, are either developed parcels or parcels been sitting there for a long time and, uh, I think the environmental is going to be pretty easy.
But we might have additional parcels that we need to look at and I don't want to rush you. I want, you know, your undivided attention given to all of them, so I think we need to stay on course and keep it the second November, second meeting in November. I believe that was what it was.
Gentlemen, y'all got a way in here?
Yeah. I, I think it can be done.
I prefer that we have it later on in November because if we start rushing things, we're going to end up missing something and it could cost us down the road. And understand the position that these owners are as far as we're trying to either sell it, remodel it, whatever the case may be. But then again, we're going to be spending up to millions of dollars of money and we just need to make sure we do it right and so I would still suggest we stay to where we originally said.
Okay. Mr. Enbel?
But by dragging it out, you, you, you look, you, you risk the chance. Now, we just closed on a piece in a matter of, you know, two weeks, so it, it's not like these things are, you know, take a long time to figure out.
But we've got nineteen properties.
Got nineteen instead of one or two.
They didn't do the ones with the off, off.
Yeah, but there are like five toge-, I mean, they're all together. They're not like nineteen spread all over the county.
Am I hearing you want to keep it on the twentieth of November? Okay. Majority, uh, yeah, the second meeting or the twenty-second, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge Green, um, would you, um, we're honored to have you in, in our session today. Would y'all come forward? I think you have a visitor you'd like to introduce to us.
Yeah, thank you so much. I appreciate the chance to interrupt you for just a moment. Uh, future Judge Lewis, Jeff Lewis is here, this, visiting with us today. These are our Commissioners, obviously, and I just wanted to take a minute to introduce Jeff to all of you and to all of you out here in the audience. He'll be starting with us on December the first, taking Judge Santuri's place. I know he'll be a great addition to our judiciary here and thank you for just letting us take a moment of your time.
Well, we thank you for joining us, sir. You'll find that Walton County is the best place in the panhandle, probably the state of Florida, so we're, we're happy to have you with us.
My wife and I are both natives of Pensacola, very familiar with North Florida and we are both very excited to become part of your community over here. I look forward to getting to know each of you, although not in the courtroom.
Well, we offer you our support and the support of our staff, anything you need to, to make your, your job easier, that's what we're here for.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, are there any more public comments? Uh, seeing none, we'll take a five-minute break, uh, and then we'll con-, uh, continue with Planning and Development Services. Good. As always, it's a pleasure to see you, sir. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, we have several items on the agenda this morning. The first one is a request to award the RFP number zero sixteen dash zero two three to CitizenServe to provide software for the Plaine Department. Um, we, uh, the panel met with or had demonstrations from a couple of different companies. Uh, we had an in-depth demonstration by Citizen Serve. I believe we feel like this is the, uh, the best software for us, it meets our needs. Uh, it's very intuitive to use, we feel like it's easy to use. Um, it also has a, um, portion of it which would be, uh, would allow the public to review or see any kind of permitting activity that's going on twenty-four seven. Uh, just log on to our, our site, how it would work and they would be able to see, uh, copies of things and so forth. Um, also it would allow, uh, the ability to do e-permitting, uh, so people could email us if you were a contractor or builder, whomever, you would be allowed to, uh, to email those, have those in electronic format, uh, which we feel like is, is, uh, I guess the, uh, the trending method of review in, in the industry. Um, it would allow twenty-four seven, you know, submissions, uh, that would cut down on our walk-in traffic and those kind of things. We can spend more time actually reviewing permits and getting those out. So we're very, very happy about, about the, uh, about the Citizen Serve and we feel like it meets all of our needs. Also, uh, it allows us to track our permitting, provide, um, updates and analysis of the kind of activity we have, the level of activity we have, uh, and also will also help us ensure that payments are being made, fees are being collected and so forth and we feel like this is the, the total package, so we, we recommend that, uh, that the board allows us to move forward with the contract for this Citizen Serve software.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Mr. Dice, um, this forty-eight thousand dollars a year?
Yes, sir.
Does it take care of maintenance of the, of the software and all that or the updates and all that?
It, it does. Um, this, this will be held in the cloud and Rick, and Rick's here if you need, uh, for the technical merits of it, uh, it, it's held in the cloud also. I think we get unlimited support as I recall from that, which means anytime we have an issue or question, we can call them. Um, many times contracts has a limit on how much you could, how much support you get. Uh, I believe Citizen Serve has, is providing unlimited support in the event that we have questions or need things. I believe the updates are done automatically. Um, if, if you allow, we can, we can allow the updates automatically, we can manage it however we need to, um, uh, but, but that forty-eight thousand dollars, uh, does, does provide us the support and also the updating if, if we so choose to have it.
Thank you.
Wayne, how many vendors responded to the RFP?
I believe we had six or seven. Um, not, not a tremendous amount, we had six or seven. We narrowed it down to two, um, that fit our needs and fit what we're asking for and again, I think we feel like the Citizen Serve was, was the, by far, the, the best choice as far as our needs.
Is it user-friendly from the outside? Developers, homeowners, being able to come in there and not have a problem being...
Yes, sir, and that's one of the things that, that I was very concerned about is make sure it was easy to use, it was an easy tool. Uh, and I think the difference between Citizen Serve and the other one we demoed, Citizen Serve was much more intuitive to use, much easier to use, easy to understand, easy to navigate, and so that was one of my primary concerns is that is it going to be something that we can all use? Uh, many times you might have software that's very complicated and, and people stop, stop using it or only use portions of it. I believe this one's very simple to use, very easy to use. Um, also it is compatible, uh, it can, with Navoline and also, um, migrating some of our old databases that we have in Microsoft format like Access Database, uh, will be merged into this, um, and so we'll be, be able to collect some of our historic data and have it placed in here, so that, I, I was very impressed with that.
Well, this is not going to make it mandatory for everybody to use it because there are some that are not computer savvy, such as myself.
Right.
That I would, may need assistance.
That is correct. Yes, sir. Um, we, we definitely will still take and walk in. If someone wants to use this service where it is electronic, we definitely would, would, would encourage that, but it's, it would not be mandatory. Um, they could still walk in as we, as we do currently and we will never at this point mandate that they'd use this, the electronic portion of it.
Thank you.
We're sure that Jeff probably can help you out there, sir.
He's just as bad as I am.
Uh, thank you, Wayne, and we do appreciate, um, this is, um, something we've been looking forward to for a long time, so we appreciate the hard work you and your staff and, and Rick and I have put into it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, the next item is a request to approve the Southern Terrarmont Landscape Plan variances. This is at the Mosshead Nestro Park and again, the package in your book is what they are proposing and staff, uh, recommends approval of that. Uh, Mr. Carpenter's here if you have any questions regarding, uh, the landscape plan, but staff does recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chairman, the third item we have is a request to approve the planning fee resolution. As you may recall, several months ago, we, uh, we created position of DO inspector and also some engineering positions. Um, part of that was is that to recruit part of the cost of that, of those positions, we proposed fees, um, DO inspection fees and things of that nature, and this is just a follow-up to that prior to the fiscal year beginning.
Any questions, ladies and gentlemen? Any comments?
Nope.
Okay. I can see, um, Mr. Enbel doing his numbers over there. Um, any comments, sir? All right, I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing...
The only other comment I have is, I know we need this and, and I support it, but let's just make sure that we try to, you know, not put more, you know, fees on that we, you know, just those we necess-, that we really have to have.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. You know, I, I think one of the issues we're having is we were borrowing a DO inspector from Public Works and sometimes they had their job, we, our, our thing's maybe getting a little bit delayed because they're busy. This allows us to be much more responsive to the, to the development community when there are needs, needs for inspections, um, and so I, I think we, with our new DO inspector , Blind Carter's been with us for a few months now, um, I think we've been able to be much more responsive and also be able to track things much more carefully, uh, through our department. So I think it's been a, a, a big plus for us, but, but absolutely we don't want to, uh, have additional fees that have no benefit to anyone, so we, we definitely keep that in consideration.
Thank you.
All right. Um, I know. Um, any further discussion? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Madam Chairman, our last item is a quasi-dedicial item, need to be sworn in.
Anyone anticipate speaking on this item, uh, would you please stand and raise your right hand? If you anticipate speaking on the, uh, request to approve by resolution Leisure Lake Road abandonment, do each of you solemnly swear or firm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth.
Thank you.
Commissioners, if you had any ex parte communications that you need to disclose that you haven't disclosed?
I've turned it into, into the clerk.
Me too.
They've all, everybody looks like they've disclosed, have, uh, any reason you could not render a fair and impartial decision based on those ex parte contacts? There's an affirm-, uh, no affirmance, everybody says no. Mr. Dice, it's all yours.
All right. Madam Chairman, this item is a request approved by resolution, a Leisure Lake Road abandonment. Um, I'll, this is initiated by the county. I'll ask Mr. Carpenter to come over and talk about the damn road abandonment and give an update to the commission.
Thank you, Commissioners. Matt Carpenter for, uh, the Plaine Department. Uh, this is a petition for abandonment submitted by Walton County Public Works proposing to abandon a portion of Leisure Lake Road right-of-way on 0.409 acres with future land use of rural village. The process prescribed for petition of abandonment has been followed. Proper notice has been provided. The recommendation from the Planning Commission was to deny this request and ask the board to consider or reconsider whether or not the road would be reopened across the dam. There was testimony at the Planning Commission in support of that. I would like to remind the board that on March 24, 2015, this board indicated that they would not want to continue that road in that location due to the possible compromise, the integrity of the dam that the county does not own. I think Buddy Wright is here from Public Works that can provide some more detail about the abandonment request, and there may be members of the audience that wish to speak to this item.
All right. Buddy, would you speak first, and then we will open it up for discussion.
Morning, Commissioners. Just wanted to give you a little brief history and then certainly take any questions y'all may have of staff. But Mac alluded, back on March 24, 2015, you know, we did bring this to the board, and it was approved to basically not put the road back across the dam, and it was due to maintenance and liability issues. And then, again, on February the 23, 2016, we had brought it back for further direction, and at that time, the board, you know, allowed us to move forward with the abandonment. And basically, what that allows, would allow us to do is relinquish all maintenance of the dam mound to the homeowners' association. So, basically, what you have, and Rick, can you put that picture up? I think that might come in handy. So, there's a, so basically, what the abandonment is, it's 297 feet long, which is across the dam, 60-foot wide of the right-of-way. And there's a picture. If y'all see the picture. That's on the west side of the dam mound, over by Mr. Phillips, looking back to the east. So, that gives you an idea. You can see the post there on the far side of the dam. You see the other post. That's the area we're talking about, a 60-foot swath, 297 feet across the dam.
Any questions of Mr. Wright?
If I recall correctly also, and I don't know if it made the minutes necessarily, but somebody brought up the safety issue of it, too, from the standpoint of that, again, it's not a county-owned dam, it's a private dam. It went through an MSBU for the private property owners to get it repaired. And in addition to the liability and maintenance, if I recall correctly, there was a safety issue that was concerned, which was prompted the board's reasons for not putting a road back across there.
Right. And that's right, Commissioner. And really, the biggest concern for Public Works is, you know, the liability and the maintenance, because the HOA is responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the dam. Now, we have a 60-foot right-of-way on top of that dam, so, you know, if we put a road back across there without controlling and assuming the responsibility of the entire dam mound, the riser pipe and everything, you know, we cannot guarantee the success of our road if we were to put the road back across there, so.
And if we did damage to, if the road did damage to the dam, then the county would be liable?
Well, most likely, and of course, we've had this issue in other parts of the county. Well, we don't own the dam, and if the dam fails, our road fails, and then we, to replace the road, we would have to, most likely, fix the dam. So, we would be on the hook for both, and that's the issue. From legal standpoint, that's the issue. We have a right-of-way across a piece of property that we can't really control, and that's a real concern for us, legally speaking.
And this is not the only entrance, a road that the, that the people can use? Is there another, there are other accesses?
There is ingress and egress from both sides of this area. Over on the west side, you have Roberts and a portion of Leisure Lake that connects to High Note Road. On the east side, the main way out is Leisure Lake Road. And, well, I'm kind of messed up with the map here. But you can see there on the east side, you have Leisure Lake Road that runs all the way back out to 1087.
Okay. All right. Any further questions of Mr. Wright?
Buddy, have you got any preliminary figures of what it would cost?
We don't, Commissioner. We could come back with those if y'all choose to have us. I would kind of hate to speculate, because we would have to have some engineering done and a cost estimate. We could certainly, if y'all wish, we could bring that back to you.
All right. Just looking at the picture of the road area there, I mean, we got water on both sides with a, there you go, and a significant drop-off from the road bed down to the water's edge that would have to be protected, and I can see a significant cost of putting barriers of some sort through there to keep the people from running off in there.
Right. Yeah, I'm sure it would have to be guardrails and some substantial stormwater treatment system put in there to.
All the curving and all that to keep the water contained to, directed to a certain location.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
It does, you know, the road, Shady Creek Lane, going to my house, doesn't have guardrails, and it's more than once, you know, as you make that sharp turn.
We're letting out a couple dams right there that we have accepted years ago that has caused us some major issues.
Yes.
Not only on the safety side, but it did, went, go out one time during a heavy rain.
Yeah.
And it cost a lot of money to put it back.
Buddy, would there be any issues? Is there something that would cause this to be necessary for access, because the other roads wouldn't be accessible?
I mean, you have two connections on the west side. You have Roberts Road that goes around, and you also have the portion of Leisure Lake Road that's still open on the west side. Now, there is, there is two ways out. Take Lake Tantara Drive. Now, the county does not maintain that, so I can't really say whether they can or could not use that one. But on Leisure Lake Road from, you know, where the road is shut off now out, I mean, there's, you know, there's really no concern as far as wetlands, you know, cross drains that's failed, or, you know, doesn't traverse any creeks or rivers, so, you know, it's pretty much a straight shot. I suppose if you had a, an accident there at the corner of Leisure Lake and 1087, might snarl it up for a few minutes until they got that. But as far as, you know, the road and any danger of not being able to get in and out there, I would say that it's very unlikely.
Any other questions of Mr. Wright? All right. At this time, I'll open it up for public comment. If you'd like to, anyone like to speak to this matter? Yes, sir. Again, if you would come forward, state your name for the record, spell your last name, and tell us if you've been sworn.
Richard Bryan, I have not been sworn. I have a question, though.
We still have to have this sworn. Thank you, Mr. Bryan. Do you solemnly swear or firm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I just want to ask the question about a fire truck. Is there a place, a turnaround area on either side of that? In other words, if you had a fire and the truck came in there, would there be a turnaround spot from either end of that road coming in?
You mean the dam or our Leisure Lake Road?
Well.
Either end of the dam?
There's a road that is being disconnected, and now the fire truck could go through, I'm assuming. And I'm, and what I'm asking is, is there a turnaround place? Is there a place wide enough for a truck to make a turnaround when it goes in?
I don't have my picture, but from the west side, I think there's, there is one residence coming down the hill from Roberts Road. So, Roberts is on the west side. Come down toward the dam mound. There's one residence there. We do maintain down all the way to the dam mound, so, you know, there's a driveway there that they could service the one house. Now, on the east side, there's, I think there's a place on the corner there at Vicki Lane, and there's one across the street, so I don't see no problem with the fire department accessing any residents there, because, I mean, this road's been closed for seven years, and.
Okay. Well, in most neighborhoods, there's not a designated turnaround spot, you know, for vehicles. Pretty much have to use people's driveways or something of that nature, I would assume.
Well, and we, and, you know, we don't want to close it off going down the hills to the dam, because there's several, the property owners have to access their properties from there, and we didn't want to get into, you know, causing any hardship, so.
Okay. Good. Thank you. If you'd sit up front and be available for further questions, Buddy? Yes, Mr. Bryan?
Would this limit in any way any kind of development along the road that remains?
If it's been closed for seven years, I assume not. But you, sir, if you would like to come forward, state your name for the record, spell your last name, and let us know if you've been sworn.
My name is Bobby Settles, S-U-T-T-L-E-S. I live on the corner of Vicki Lane and Leisure Lake Road.
Have you been sworn?
Yes.
All right, thank you, sir. Proceed.
And I am the one that brought up the safety concerns at last meeting. First of all, is little kids. We've got school buses letting off little kids at the corner of Vicki Lane and Leisure Lake Road that has to let kids off, and then they have to pull up and back up. Where's the kids go? You know, they're dangerous, and it's very dangerous for letting, we got one bus that goes all the way down Vicki Lane, they make a U-turn and come out. These other two buses has to turn around there at Vicki Lane and Leisure Lake Road. I lived there for 24 years, and that road's always been open. And like Tim Brown said, the road has not been maintained down to the dam. One side is, my side, I got a little, not a four-wheeler, but a buggy that I use in my yard work. I can't even drive it down on the east side of the road, because it's washed out so bad. And the abandonment posted up there says the right-of-way is going to be abandoned from Leisure Lake Road and Vicki Lane to East Roberts Road. That's a way more land than the dam itself. And personally, if something happens on 1087, me, Mr. Smith, both got heart problems, we're locked in. We got no way out. And years ago, Leisure Lake Dam was used as a mercy route around Highway 90 when there was a terrible accident in front of Mosshead Journal Store. Eighteen-wheelers, everybody used Leisure Lake Road to get back to 90, and we would like to see the road reopen.
Thank you, sir.
In due respect, Mr. Smith, that's in a wheelchair, he's got a letter here, April 9, 2010, to whom it may concern. Subject: Leisure Lake Subdivision Dam Repair Project. This is to advise, I am aware of a proposed project to repair the Leisure Lake Dam by the Leisure Lake Land Owners Association, Incorporated. It is also my understanding that upon completion of the dam repair, Walton County will engineer and reopen Leisure Lake Road transiting Leisure Lake Dam. As a downstream landowner attachment to this project, I have no objection to the proposed repair dam as prepared by done engineering dated March 30, 2010. I acknowledge that Leisure Lake Land Owners Association, Incorporated, in accordance with Northwest Florida Water Management District and Department of Environmental Protection Guidance, is required to maintain the dam slopes and hardware associated with the dam outflow of the required dam, some of which approach my property. Therefore, I designate Leisure Lake Land Owners Association, protect, operation and maintenance assessment easement to Leisure Lake Dam slope that approached on my property slowly, solemnly, for purposes of necessary maintenance. More in grace erosion repair, trash recover, and outflow, which is also another neighbor. Roger Phillips donated land to the county to make the slow toe of the slope a lot longer and safer, and accumulated some of their property with the promise of the lake, the dam getting reopened. And safety, though, is our biggest concern. Thank you.
Mr. Settles, quickly, who was that letter addressed to?
To whom it may concern.
Okay. It wasn't sent to the county?
Roger.
All right.
He's the other landowner on the opposite side of the dam, and he's got more.
I'm Roger Phillips.
Would you spell your last name, and have you been sworn?
P-H-I-L-L-I-P-S.
Have you been sworn?
Yes.
All right.
I think, you know, this, this letter was presented to us from Leisure Lake Homeowners Association when the dam failed. And they needed our property to put the dam back in the center of the right-of-way so the road could be reopened. When all this took place, the dam was designed for the road to be put back across it. I believe that Mr. Enfield was a part of the MSBU stuff for them to do this, so he was aware that, yes, the road was to go back across there when it was put back in. I believe even Mr. Jones was involved in some of this. So, how it got to the point it is now, you know, had we, as landowners, known that there was no intent for the road to go back across, the dam wouldn't exist on our property. But, I mean, this is where we are. And you look at the map there, yeah, there is, there was one other road out of there on the east side, but apparently that has been abandoned years ago.
Magglioia Lane. Yeah. That was a county right-of-way that the homeowners' association got closed years ago, and now they're trying to get another abandoned.
So, now, all the people on Vicki Lane, all those people back in there, the only access is Leisure Lake Road out of there to the east, to 1087. I mean, there is even no emergency if something happened there. They couldn't even cross the dam if you closed this right-of-way.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this issue? Buddy, I think you had a follow-up you wanted to. You're okay? Okay.
During the testimony, I heard some, a question about the length of the actual request, and I checked the survey against the resolution, and the resolution that you're being asked to adopt does include only the dam. It's a 297-by-60-foot parcel of property.
Correct, yeah. You concur, Mr.?
Just for clarification, that is correct. When we come before the board and ask to look at this, to figure out how we could release, relieve the county from some liability, we looked at it from Vicki to Roberts, but, you know, if, that's why we decided and we got right down on the dam, because if we'd done any more abandoning outside the top of that dam mound, then Mr. Phillips and Mr. Smith would be, or Mr. Settles, they wouldn't be able to get entirely to their properties, access from the Leisure Lake Road right there. So, that's why we had just went right across the top of the dam mound, down to the 297-foot by 60-foot wide.
It's 297 by 50, that's 60, and that's what's in the resolution.
I have a question. Is there a homeowners' association out there?
There is, yes, ma'am.
For Leisure Lakes.
And Leisure Lakes homeowners, and they're the ones that did the MSBU to repair the dam?
Yes, ma'am.
Can legally the homeowners' association have an agreement with the county that if we put the road back, number one, and any damages was done as a result of that road, that the county would not be held responsible?
Yes, but, yes, yes, you can, but there is a but to that, you know.
I knew there would be.
Well, unfortunately, you know, the law's pretty clear. Once we undertake to maintain, and we start maintaining, and we improve, ultimately, it's our responsibility. So, if they breach the agreement, ultimately, it would be our responsibility.
Okay. Mr. Enfield?
I was going to see if you're ready for motions, but I see someone's got their hand up again.
Yes, sir. You'll have to come forward so that we can record you on the microphone, please, sir, and state your name again for the clerk.
Roger Phillips.
Thank you, sir.
Now, there's also been instances where emergency vehicles have came down on our side that needed to be on the other side for Mr. Smith, you know, on the other side, and they have to go back all the way around.
Okay.
So, that's, that's another issue. And the maintenance, there's a, there's an agreement with, I guess, Water Management and Homeowners Association to maintain this dam. And Mr. Davis was discussing the liability issues. Whenever we allowed them to put the dam on our property, there was a clause included in that contract that Mr. Smith and I, even though the dam, we allowed them to put the toe on our property, that we would be held harmless from, from any failure in the future. And I don't, I don't really understand why that would be different for the county.
But that agreement was between the HOA and you all. That was not a county?
Understood.
Okay.
But when I'm associating it with, there's the same thing that he was talking about, the liability issue for the county, if they're, if they're to maintain the thing, you know, then the county's only got the road.
Well, and, the difference, Mr. Phillips, is legally, is we're the government, so unfortunately, if the agreement between ourselves and the homeowners' associations failed for whatever reason, they just refused to comply, because it's our, because if we had a road across there, because we've undertaken. had a road across there, because we've undertaken to improve and maintain, legally, we would be, we would be responsible for continuing the maintenance and the construction. So we would, it's entirely within the realm of possibility, we would be responsible for the dam. And, and we've actually been in that situation before. So.
Well, again, it was, you know.
I might end up with a judgment against the homeowners association that I can't collect.
Understood. Well, maybe I'm in that position right now. But, you know, had we known, the road would already been back because we would not have allowed them to put the dam back to accept the road to begin with. And the dam would be crossed, the road would be crossing there where there is no dam.
Yes, ma'am.
But if the dam wasn't put back, wouldn't your property be underwater?
No, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
No, ma'am. If they moved the dam onto their property, then no. I mean, the, the road would be back, this it has been for years and years.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Commissioners, my name is Jennifer Brown and the secretary for the HOA, for Leisure Lake Land Owners Association.
Have you been sworn?
I have been.
Thank you.
And it's B-R-O-W-N, as in the color. The allegations that the HOA, as my perception, deceived the two gentlemen that signed the, signed that allowed us to put and continue the dam on, we had every intention of allowing the road to put it back on. And if so, proceed. Our issue now, and our question is, is it very necessary for the expenditure? The road has been closed for seven years. During that time, right now, on Google Maps, you can't close the road because the easement's still there. Once everything gets signed and the abandonment goes through, Google Maps gets updated, Waze gets updated, and those are the navigation GPS routes that are used by emergency personnel. Emergency personnel, both I believe the Liberty and the one right there in Mossy Head, have access to both sides. As far as the school buses, seven years, that 180 days, that's a little over 1,200 school days. There has not been an issue. The school bus drivers live in the area. They know the routes. So the board, the position of the HOA is that we would just like to ask whether or not it's financially feasible. Should the board and should the county accept the liability for something happening? One of the reasons why we would like this to proceed is so we can close and then make it so pedestrians can't go on that dam. Because right now, as the picture shows, the one that has to be rotated, you can clearly walk across it. And the safety concern is we've had kids on four-wheelers going across that and accessing the lake. Someone accesses the lake, it's our liability. That could be very dangerous on behalf of the HOA. Right to the, to the right of that, you can see. You can drop right off into the, to the dam. Previously, there was no guard rails. There were no security measures on that road. And when the road failed, it was up to the HOA as owning that property to maintain it. Every person in the HOA, we did the MSBU, financed that and have continued, some of us, to pay it on our taxes and will until we pay off our portion. So we just wanted to present that as our, our stance. In this past seven years, hasn't been necessary for there to be a road. There is access through, up through, over Tentera, which as I understand, is not county-controlled. But then again, right now, if someone were to drive over the dam, what would the concerns be in its current condition with no road being on it? And we would just like to be able to block pedestrian traffic and to be able to block people from bringing, we see people drag their canoes onto the lake, which then endangers all of the property. We've had things stolen off of docks. So we just would like to kind of close in that area and make it more secure for those, for our residents.
Thank you, ma'am. Could you tell me how many members of the homeowners association there are?
There are 36 lots. And there are several of those lots are dual jointly owned. Like I own two. So I believe there's 26 as it stands right now.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
One more time, sir.
You know.
And then you can call. We don't have the motion yet.
I keep hearing that this thing has been closed for so long. But it's been closed so long because of the battle that's been going on here about the thing. You know, there are two years of it was for settlement of the dam. And then we had to go through and get a letter for the county from the engineer of record, Mr. Dunn, to Mr. Enfield, that it was now stable enough for the road to go back across. Now, once that happened, now here we are trying to close the right of way instead of putting the road back. And, and now, by doing, closing that, now we're privatizing somebody's property.
All right. Thank you, sir. Ladies, anyone else? All right, ladies and gentlemen?
Madam Chair, I, I know that this is back and forth between private parties here. And I know that back in, in March of 2015, the board addressed that. And we did get a, a letter from engineer saying that it's finally stabilized. However, the board at that time decided that the maintenance issues, the liability issues, and the safety issues involved would warrant not putting a road back in. So I'd like to make a, a motion to accept the request to approve the abandonment of that dam.
All right. I have a, a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and second. Is there any further discussion among the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. That's the last item we have on our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you. Thank you for coming, ladies and gentlemen. Buddy?